Okay, let's come to order. The pledge tonight will be led by Mr. Holliday.
Potential salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a moment of silence and as we do that, I'd ask that you remember family of Ms. Jerlene Jerry Patton, who was a long time county employee who passed away recently. Okay, thank you.
Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion's adopted. Consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? On favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion's adopted. No visitors tonight. Takes us to number seven.
Okay, we have two spotlights. First one's coordinated school health program. And Heather Corbin, who's headed up the coordinated school health program, will present. And also, I don't know Ms. Stitzel what your role in this is, but Jenna Stitzel will be taking Ms. Corbin's place. She's moving into one of our schools as a science teacher, so good luck to you and good luck to you.
Thank you. I wanted to start quickly by addressing why it is we need to be concerned about student health in Tennessee, which of course it doesn't really... there we go. Tennessee has the second highest rate of adult obesity tied with Alabama. First place is Mississippi. And the fourth highest rate of overweight youth directly related to obesity. We also have heart disease and stroke are the first and third leading causes of death and disability in Tennessee. And Tennessee's annual tab for obesity, this is a slightly old number, so it would be higher than this, is 1.8 billion dollars a year. So that's one of the reasons why we focus a lot on obesity. But we have other health issues with our students as well. One of the main ones that's increasing is asthma as well as obesity. Poor health status of Tennessee students can be linked to increased absenteeism, poor academic performance, increased chance of ill health in adulthood, increased burden on the healthcare costs, and a decreased quality of life. We want our kids to have the best life that they can have, and we want them to have the education to have the best life that they can have. But if they're sick and they're not coming to school, we're having problems from the get-go. What the state decided to do in 2000 is they adopted a model designed by the Centers for Disease Control, the coordinated school health model. They started it in ten pilot schools across the state. In 2007-2008 school year, they spread it out to the entire state. In Rutherford County, we started in spring of 2008. The model takes a holistic approach to health and looks at the health of our students from every aspect that affects their health, both in and out of school. So we have health education and physical education, which are obviously courses that we teach in our schools, as well as health services, which are nurses, nutrition services, our cafeterias, counseling, psychological, and social services, making sure we have a healthy school environment. That includes safety, health promotion for staff, because our staff are the role models for our students, and if they are not present in the schools, then they're not teaching to the best of their abilities. As well as family and community involvement, because our kids do come from the community, they do come from their families. All of those things together affect the health of our students. So the goal of coordinated school health is to link all of those together and help improve our kids' capacity to learn. One of the main things that we do in this process in the state of Tennessee is we take a lot of data as to the health status of our students. This year, 2010-2011, was the first year that we were able to do our health screenings in all our elementary and middle schools in the county. We screened for BMI, blood pressure, hearing, and vision for kindergarten, second, fourth, sixth, eighth, and some of our ninth grade students. It was just the ninth grade students at Blackman High School, Egaville High School, and Central Magnet. Right now, that's just due to time constraints. Our results from this year, fifty-nine percent of our kids had a normal BMI, which left thirty-nine percent in either the overweight or obese category. That overweight or obese category is everybody eighty-fifth percentile and up in BMI. If you just look at the ninety-fifth percentile, which would be the obese category, twenty-one percent of our kids are in that category. I believe last time I addressed this, I was asked the question about gender. We do have answer to that now. In obesity especially, our boys tend to be more obese than our girls. Overweight and obese, they're about even. So, what are we doing about this? Well, first of all, the state put forth the ninety-minute physical activity law. I believe it was in 2007. We have to get the kids ninety minutes of physical activity each week in the schools. All of our elementary schools are completely compliant with this law. Our middle schools have been working very hard to become compliant. Fitness Fridays have become an ideal situation where they use their exploratory classes on Fridays to get more fitness into the school week. Our high schools have been focusing more on integrating physical activity in our academic lessons. Next year, it's going to be more challenging, because they've taken that law and they've added to it. So now that we're required to integrate thirty minutes of physical activity each day for all of our students. Again, for elementary, we've got recess and PE. Most of the time, they're going to be covered. It's getting those secondary students, and Jenna's going to talk to you a little bit later about how she plans to do that. Another measurement that we've done in our PE classes, because our physical educators are really focused on this as well, is a measure of aerobic fitness, the mile run. Just very quickly, if you look at those percentiles, I know y'all are used to looking at percentiles for our academic subjects, those are very low. Our kids are not very aerobically fit, and that's why the state of Tennessee is pushing coordinated school health, why we need to get them more active during the day. A quick summary of things that we have done so far. A lot of what we've done is focus on teacher training, teaching teachers to integrate physical activity in their daily classrooms and in their academic lessons, so that we don't give up academic time for physical activity time. Take Ten is a set of lessons that is supported by the state. That's for elementary school students. We also led several for high school and middle school teachers to learn how to integrate physical activity in their classrooms as well. In addition, we've applied for several grants and donations, and we've gotten forty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars into the school system that were not previously there. We've increased our community partnerships to twenty-four, and we've done a lot of bringing in physical education and physical activity materials and equipment. One of the big things that's caused a big fuss in the schools and has been great is the WEEs. We have WEEs at all our schools, or we will have at all of our schools this year. They're using them in the PE classes to get the students active, so they're integrating with the technology in a way that they are used to dealing with things, and they're using it as a reward instead of using food or parties that increase calories in our kids. So we're getting them active, letting them do something they see as fun, rather than just feeding them extra calories. In 2011-2012, Ms. Jenna Stitzel is going to take over, so I'm going to let her tell you what she plans to do.
Hi. Just real quickly, I'd like to meet with all the PE teachers at the beginning of the year, just to let them know that I support what they're doing. I'm not trying to battle them, and I'm trying to help them. I want to ask them what they expect from me, what their needs are, what I can help them do. I want to focus this year on research. Any academic studies that support physical activity and nutrition, which enhances a child's ability to learn. I'm going to do that through... This book Spark has studies that pertain to that. There's a lot of research journals I'm going to subscribe to, and I'm going to get those out to all the teachers, administration. Any teacher that wants this book can take it from our lending library. I'd love to give it to all the teachers if they want it, so that resource will be available. As far as getting the thirty minutes in each day, I'm going to do a lot of what we've been doing. Take Ten, Michigan Model, group games, books, WEEs in all the schools, and there's a new... it's a new internet service, Adventure to Fitness, and it's thirty minutes, and they can just turn it on, and the teacher and the students can all interact with this program. It's Thirty Minutes to Physical Fitness. So it's pretty much taking care for them, and it also comes with a lesson plan included. So, that's it. Do you have anything else for them?
So, a big change is that now in the high schools, there'll have to be thirty minutes of activity every day?
Every day, yes sir.
And how do you plan to achieve that? Because their schedule is pretty tight.
Well, there's ways other than PE to do that, and we've discussed them. I don't remember them all. You want to share that, one of you two?
A lot of what we're hoping the high schools will do is, as a teacher, the way that I teach, getting more kinesthetic lessons into the academic day, so that they're actually learning their content and moving at the same time. So it wouldn't be a set thirty-minute block. Some principals are talking about adding short walking breaks after lunch for ten, five, ten, fifteen minutes. I've heard different times from different principals. But other than that, with the schedule so tight, the only way to do it is to integrate it in the classroom.
But if you're taking, for example, ROTC, or if you're on the football team, or you're on the marching band, doesn't all that count towards your thirty-minute time?
Yes, it does. But for the students that are not taking those courses, are the ones that are more challenging in the high school.
This is going to sound silly. Changing classes, does that count?
Well, they should.
They have gone back and forth on that. Originally, they definitely said absolutely not, and then they said maybe, and now they're saying, "Well, we don't know." The problem with using class time change is sometimes kids, their class change is from this room to that room over there. So all you're really doing is increasing their social time rather than their physical activity time.
Yeah, but you know, to expand on this thing, once again, and it's necessary. I mean, the data that you provided is pretty revealing, but you know, we have all these academic mandates, and then we've got to insert thirty minutes a day out of the classroom to exercise, for kids to exercise, and they don't score that on the state test. We won't end up on target for it, but trust me, we've got to find our academic time, as you would acknowledge too, yeah.
Well, you know, in math, what are you going to do, jumping jacks while you're solving your math problem? I mean, it's a great idea to integrate it, but it's going to be limited by the subject matter, right?
The question I would have is how would we track those kinds of things for a particular student? My understanding is in Oakland, they'll be on a regular block this next year, so if you've got a kid that on one day of blocks, they have the PE and they have marching band, that day they're going to get plenty. But if there are three classes, the next day happen to be biology, US history, and math, that's not going to happen, and how's the math teacher going to know that the US history teacher did do that? That tracking, that seems to be a very impossible thing to do.
Fran?
You normally lead by example. Is there anything in the system to indicate what stage the teachers are at relative to their health and their weights? Obviously, by example, we want to make sure we can get everybody on the same path.
Uh-oh.
We do a teacher survey every year, but it is self-reported, and I can't say that most of them refuse to self-report that particular information.
Well, now, what about assessing the board?
As I said, all goes back to the school.
We could do a health screening of the board, offering all the equipment, and we could do highway.
The best way is by example, teachers, administrators, you name it.
Yes sir. And that's why staff wellness is so important, and we do have a wellness program here in Rutherford County that's not just for the school system, but for actually the entire county. And Jenna just recently attended that board meeting, the Smart Steps Board, and she'll be involved with that as well, trying to get our employees more active and healthier in their lifestyle.
Are there any incentives for those people you're talking about?
Not right now.
Yeah.
Other than, a lot of the programs that they offer are free, but that's about the only incentive right now.
Erin?
I noticed that Laverne High School right now, we have open gym and open pool hours during the summer here. Is that coordinated through the CSH office? Is there an element of that?
It has not been. However, we definitely suggest to the schools as much as possible to have open gyms and have facilities available to the children and to the community, both outside of school hours and during the summer. But as far as coordinating that, it's on a school-by-school basis right now.
Actually, there's money appropriated to, what's it called, the Conservation Board or something. Mr. Ben Katz heads it up, and we have a lot of the schools that are open. And also, there's some swim time for them. The pools are open at the schools that they can pay fifty cents or something like that and go swim. So there are a lot of opportunities for that.
And then when we talk about the Parent Academy and opportunities there, you know, home nutrition as well is a great part of, you know, what we can do to make these numbers better, so there may be an opportunity for CSH to contribute there.
That would be a great time to bring in some of our community partners as well. The Health Department does a lot of nutrition education, as does UT Extension, and we work with them a lot. They have a lot of set research-based lessons that they use with adults to help them learn better nutrition and physical activity habits.
Anything else?
I just add that I can speak from experience how effective these kinds of things can be. I've got grandchildren that one's preschool, one's second grade now. And the concept of healthy snack, for example, they know what that is. You can go down the list, and they understand that. And it's so much easier to persuade them or get them to eat the right thing, or recognize they're not being penalized because they're having to do these kinds of things, because that's the way it's done in school. And I think, I know we can fight some battles. I saw on television yesterday, I guess it was, Los Angeles County has banned flavored milks for the next school year, and how big a battle that can be. And I know that there are schools, and I won't say what I know or don't know about what we do here, but I know there are schools that ban a lot of the cupcakes and things like that for their parties and those kinds of things. I mean, it's a tough thing for parents to accept at some point in time, but if we do this long enough period of time, kids will recognize at kindergarten, first, second grade level, if that's all they've ever known, they can kind of accept that so much better. So I'm very much in favor of everything we can do.
And our school nutrition department has really been leading the way with that as well. They're actually changing the flavored milks next year.
Sure.
They're going to have them, but they're reducing the sugar content in them, and they'll all be skim-based rather than one or two percent.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you all for that report.
Okay. B. So Mr. Odom is going to do a spotlight on Educated Consumer Foundation, and we were first exposed to those guys about, what, five years ago? And when they started kind of monitoring how systems and schools did in value-added, and what they did was they started recognizing each year, three elementary and three middle school principals across the state of Tennessee for their value-added gains. So during that course of the time, I think there were maybe, say, thirty or less, maybe a few of that, recognitions, and with that came up a check. And I'm proud to say that we've had either four or five principals. Mike Swanson, Judy Goodwin.
Twice.
Twice. Andrea Hilton. Dirk Ash, either once or twice. Each of those guys were... we had a winner every year, each and every year out of the nine across the state of Tennessee, which was pretty amazing, so...
Can you, before Don starts, can you tell us what this organization is? I know I get emails from them, and I presume they do too.
Other than, I get the same thing you do, and I've been down for the presentations, and I don't know if Don can tell them, but it's just a foundation that basically encourages...
They seem to have a lot of really good information in there.
They do. They work with the State Departments too, and...
You can Google this, and just Education Consumers Foundation. If you Google them, this is the page that I have up now that you will see, and your choices of things that you can look at is on this page. Now, this is the Tennessee one that you see here. There's a larger national organization that goes by a different name, but they do some of this in other places too. But what I've done today is we're going to Education Consumers Foundation. Dr. Burns, this is another case where somebody else is reporting on us and not ourselves, and we'll kind of look in comparison. This is our time of the year for budgets and all, so let's take a look. One of the things that I chose today to share with you is to look at a graph that compares achievement student value-added gains with expenditures per pupil. When you go to this site and you choose that particular graph, and you select all schools in the state, each of the black dots up there represents one of the school systems in the state, one hundred and thirty-plus, was it one hundred and thirty-five, six, not sure exactly. Also, you'll see in this yellow bar is the average pupil expenditure. This yellow line is the average value-added gains. If you look across the state of Tennessee, here's the zero line right here. So the average across the state was negative last year for value-added gains. So that's, and with every school district plotted. So what I've done in this case to kind of help you look at it a little bit and decide which quadrant you kind of want to be in, how do you see where you might belong, if you look at this and dividing it up, anything to the right would be an expenditure greater than the state average. Any of the schools above this blue line would be value-added gains greater than the state average. So obviously, you know, you'd like to be up here. But as you begin to look at it in this quadrant, this is schools scoring above-average gains, but they also have above-average expenditures. They're to the right of the red line. Down here, they're below-average gains, but they're spending more money than the state average, even though they're spending more, they have below-average gains. Over here is a group of schools below-average gains, below-average expenditure. Rutherford County is in this quadrant, which has above-average gains but below-average expenditures across the state.
Hey, go back, Don.
Okay.
You know, so you occasionally hear, "Well, money's not the answer to all your problems." And then one might say, "Well, that's the case. They're not that many that scored above, have positive gains, that spend a lot of money." But on the other end of the spectrum, look at all the ones that are down here that were low, funded really, really low. They've struggled.
It clusters together. You can see that. To further identify it for you, I've added another line. I took the same graph and information, but then I put a red dotted line at the zero point. In other words, that's a year's gain for a year in school. That's what value-added is. If you get more than a year's gain, you'll have a positive value. If you get less than a year's gain, it would be a negative value. There are only seven school districts in the state of Tennessee. These right here that have positive gains and below-average expenditures. There we are at this dot. Many of those tend to be smaller. You know, they're all smaller than us in this particular case. And sometimes their socioeconomic is a little bit higher, or a little bit lower, so maybe a little easier to add value-added gains, that sort of thing. So this, we're in this cluster of schools. So one last look at this, and you have a copy of this slide at your desk today. How do we look compared across the state? So this is 2010. We've not received 2011. So I took the six, we're sixth place, and this is 2010 numbers, rounded off to the nearest thousands. And you can see for the size of each of the districts, and you can find each of those. Here's Memphis down here, which is above-average expenditure, below-average gain. You can look at, you know, Davidson County and look at the ones, counties that surround us, that sort of thing. Over here, we hear a lot about Oak Ridge, Franklin Special School District, you know, Montgomery County, which is kind of in behind this one, Williamson County's down here. But these schools are having the expenditures, but they're not above zero or value-added gains. They're negative scores. So really, for us to be here is something that you, as a board member, you talk to your constituents and that sort of thing, is something to be quite proud of, that we have been able to do that.
We're the only large district in the state that has positive gains.
Really? The only. When, if you go to this website and move your cursor over those dots, it'll pop up there. The information pops up and you can see. Or you can choose the districts ahead of time, and the little flags are there. That's why I didn't do it live tonight, because it's just much easier for you to see it, to lock it in. I want to draw on with Mr. Gill and something else, though, and just to kind of say to you as an instructional person. Last week, we visited Metro Nashville and looked some. They really have a database management system to die for.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, really, the director of schools down there can go in, sit down at his desk, and he turns on his computer, and it pops up before him is the attendance the day before, how many suspensions the day before, what school they came from, any formative assessments or tests that's been given, is a click away right on him on his desk. I mean, it's there. And so they contracted, and they're reading in data to do this with their management system. Another thing that's going on in virtual school, the future of schooling is going to be more virtual schooling, more online. I think Memphis is requiring one online course. Metro's going to one online course. Interestingly, in Metro and places like that, they, some of the country music stars and all, we saw pictures of them who are traveling, their students are nam roing virtual school. They actually, Metro purchased, the Florida Virtual School was purchased by Pearson Educational, and Metro has purchased the use of those products and then hired the lady that was over Florida Virtual School and brought her to Nashville. But I just say this to say, as we go down the road and we've done this, we can't do in the next few years what would work ten years ago.
Exactly.
And even though we've done lots of things, I mean, lots of buildings and things and all, if we don't get to spend a little bit more per pupil and bring in some of these things, you're either moving forward or you're going backward. And we're going to find ourselves playing catch-up.
Yep.
Just something I want to say.
You know, in connection with that, I enjoyed that day. We saw their virtual school, their dashboard, and as he said, the superintendent, not only superintendent, every principal has instantly exposed to information within their schools, teachers' test scores, value-added scores. I mean, it's amazing. Followed up by their virtual school with a team of people that put it together and worked on it for two years, each of whom was very talented and articulate, and I couldn't help but thinking, for us to do something like that, which ultimately, eventually, we'll have to do more and more of that, it would cost us, I mean, the cost is out of sight. And when you look up there, I thought it was also pretty interesting that Metro's basically just under eleven dollars, funded eleven dollars per student, and you look over to Rutherford County, and we're, what, less than eight dollars, you know? If we had, say, three dollars more per student, that'd be, what, ninety million more dollars, or almost a hundred and fifteen million dollars. And the things we could do with that, I mean, we're only limited by those funding.
Questions? It's a very interesting chart, and shows what a good job has been done.
Absolutely.
Can Don again explain the two horizontal yellow lines and the two...
This is the per pupil, this is the, when I clicked on it, I said, "Show me the average expenditure per pupil in the state." And it drew this block. So the average state expenditures is in this yellow box. The average value-added gain across the state is in this horizontal yellow box. But that is, sits below the zero point up here, because if you look at your graph, so that's why I drew that line.
I'm starting to wonder why there are double lines instead of single lines. I mean, you have more than one average.
I don't know why they did that. I mean, it's probably a confidence interval range, if you want to know the statistical reason, probably.
Questions or discussion?
So it's showing that the average is actually less than a year gained in the state.
Yes.
It was, yes. That mows together the several subjects, you know.
No, that's not good.
Very different test last year. Much more difficult, and when it comes out this year, it's tougher still, because they've raised the bar again.
I was going to ask this question back when with the health, but these mesh a little bit. What is our stance with, in regards to recess for K1, K2 kids? I mean, I'm clearly...
And I'm clearly of the opinion that there is a real value to recess. I mean, I would hope that we're encouraging that that can be a positive thing for kids to do as opposed to taking a first-grade kid and saying, you know, six and a half hours of academic is all that we do. Because I think there's lots of studies that show that for that age group, not only the exercise part of it, but also the, the breakaway from school and then the problem-solving skills that they learn just by being on a playground as opposed to being in a structured PE setting. I, I guess what I'm saying is, are we, are we encouraging or at least allowing our kindergarten, first-grade teachers to say recess? Let me take that one, Don, if I can, yeah. I mean, clearly, you're limited by the amount of recess time you have, by the number of playgrounds you had and the number of students you have. I mean, that kind of drives, that drives that issue. Principals also value recess. We've had this discussion with them before and understand the, you know, the kids can't be kept in a building for six and a half hours without some kind of break. And in most cases, they try to coordinate it with their PE schedule. Like, for example, if they got PE that day, the teacher may be assigned, if they don't have it, they're probably going to be assigned outside recess. But typically in a day, they'll get 15 to 20 minutes worth of recess. There's never enough, there aren't enough playgrounds to do much more than that. But again, the principals, I think, at the end of the day, value that instruction time and make sure that they get a little of both, a lot of instruction and a little PE time. I guess, I guess, I think you're answering my question. That they're certainly not being advised that recess is a bad thing. I don't know. Is a positive thing.
It was the.
And I didn't think that was anything but that, but I just wanted to hear that.
It was the shock of value-added early on. You remember that, you were a part of it. Everybody said, oh my, oh my, how can we increase instruction time? And you're correct. Research shows that if kids are exercising, learning comes more readily.
Grant?
But it does somewhat show that just because there's more money thrown out at a system, doesn't necessarily get the results you want. It's how it's coordinated. I think we, as a system, have done well with the amount of money that we've been given. And obviously, some of the systems have not done as well. I know some of them have, in recent years, have, have gotten some federal grants and some, and some large continuous grants, but they haven't progressed. So it depends on how it's utilized. Don't you agree?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Odom.
Great.
Somebody get the lights, please. GPS 2010, 2011 budget amendment. This amendment budgets a $5,000 donation to account 44570 for Smyrna West Alternative School and the related $5,000 for computers, account 71150-790. The amendment also real allocates $7,000 to other students support clerical staff, account 72130-162 from special education bus aides, account 72130-164 to cover anticipated expenditures for clerical staff. And we're recommending that you amend $5,000 donation to Smyrna West Alternative School and the related $5,000 in computer expenditures and to amend $7,000 to other students support clerical staff from special ed bus aides as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion's adopted.
Mr. Chairman, before we move away from that, I did want to ask before we voted, because it didn't have anything to do with it. But where are we as far as alternative schools from a seat standpoint? I mean, how, we surely have got to look at that fairly soon as to add any more seats. And I hate, I hate to think that we do, but as the numbers grow, I would think that sure. Where are, we've, yeah, over the last two or three or four years, we've met and discussed that need. Matter of fact, Smyrna West next year will open, open with 60 kids. And what's happened in order to make, to make two alternative schools work, the stay of the kid in the alternative school has been shortened. At some point, we're definitely going to have to do something with respect to add another alternative school. Of course, the deal, the issue becomes, how do we fund it? You know, we have other priorities that, you know, we have high schools that needed built. We have additions to add, being added to, owned at Eagleville, et cetera. But we're going to have to do something in the next couple of years. We are, that, some of the, like, some of the Zero Tolerance Kids and others, in lieu of going to their alternative school, are challenged with virtual schools doing their, doing their assignments on computers, et cetera. Of course, the issue becomes, a lot of those kids aren't motivated enough to do much on their own. And they're going to have somebody watch over them. So, you know, I think that's something else we'll be looking at too. But we're going to pursue that here for long. Ready? B. GPS 2011, 12 budget change. Following change is needed in the 2011, 2012 GPS budget in order to handle the fingerprinting contract with the L1 Identity Solutions, which was awarded the state bid. Rutherford County Schools will hire two part-time staff members to operate the fingerprinting office at the Maintenance Adult Ed Building. L1 will pay us $3 for each successful fingerprint processed here. This $3 payment should cover the pay and benefits of our part-time employees. And below are reflected some additional information. And we recommend that you amend the 2011, 2012 GPS budget in order to handle the fingerprinting contract with the L1 Identity Solutions as presented.
So moved.
Aye.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion's adopted. Nine.
Transportation, pursuant to Policy 141, bus contract award procedures. The new contractor list for the 2011, 2012 school year are presented for approval. These four lists, first priority, regular bus drivers, second priority, part-time or sub-drivers, third priority, those who have turned down the opportunity, and fourth list, those who currently own one or more contracts are in order to facilitate the awarding of new bus contracts on a timely basis for the beginning of the new school year and thereafter, as contracts are turned in to Transportation Department throughout the year. Recommend that you approve the potential first, second, third priority contractors list and fourth list of current contractors for the 2011, 2012 school year.
So moved.
Aye.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion's adopted. Number 10, why don't we dispense with a reading of the policies? You want to just read your recommendation?
Recommend that you approve the revision of policies. 5.102, 5.109, 6.313, 4.406, 3.50 and 4.301 on second and final reading as presented.
So moved.
Aye.
Any discussion? This is the third time we've seen these. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion's adopted. 11, I think we did the other night. 12.
We gave an FYI to the Rutherford County Executive Committee meeting. Rutherford County Executive Committee had an emergency meeting on June the 9th, 2011 and approved the systems contract with L1 Identity Solutions. On June 8th, 2011, we were notified that the contract with L1 Identity Solutions had to be approved by June 9th, so that the changeover could be completed by August the 1st, 2011. L1 Identity Solutions was awarded the state contract for fingerprint services and is the only state-proved vendor. That's an FYI.
General discussion. Okay, hearing none, I guess we're going to take a few weeks off, isn't that right, Ms. Michaels? July 14th is our next scheduled meeting, I believe. All right, we're adjourned.